And to the Republic, where it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call please.
Mr. Alt, Mr. Beistel?
Here.
Mr. Calero?
Here.
Mr. Frye, Mrs. Love, Mr. Polakowski?
Here.
Mrs. Rhodes?
Here.
Mrs. Shipley, Mr. Benz?
Here. I could show that Mr. Alt is out of town, Mrs. Shipley had to work, and Mr. Frye had a death in the family.
Uh, let the record show five present, um, citizens comments?
I have no comment cards.
Um, minutes?
Uh, before we go into this, um, I did advertise this evening as a voting meeting because I want to, uh, hire at least a reading teacher. Um, does the board have a desire to vote on the entire agenda tonight? Um, and if so, we'll just, you know, do discussion and voting at the same time, and then we can put a motion on the floor to cancel next week's meeting, or if you would like tonight to be a discussion meeting, then we'll just vote on, on the items that are really urgent at this point, so.
We'll make a motion to do that.
Do you need a motion? We have a motion.
I think that might be in order.
Motion on the floor that this be a voting meeting?
For, for all agenda items.
The second meeting in order.
So be it.
Need a roll call, Mrs. Secretary?
Roll call.
Um, Mr. Calero made a motion, Mr. Beistel second, Mr. Beistel?
Yes.
Mr. Calero?
Yes.
Mr. Polakowski?
Yes.
Mrs. Rhodes?
Yes.
Mr. Benz?
Yes, motion passes five zero with four absent. Alright then, we'll just go through the agenda here, and, uh, if you have questions or feel a need for discussion on any of the items, please do not hesitate to, uh, speak up. Uh, first item, it's recommended that the board approve the minutes of the June 29th, 2017 board meeting.
Need a motion?
So be it.
Motion by Mr. Beistel, second.
Second.
Second by Mr. Calero, questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion passes five zero with four absent, uh, counts.
Uh, it's recommended that the board approve the June and July 2017 treasures report and the accounts payable summaries.
Need a motion by Mr. Calero, second. Second by Mrs. Rhodes, questions? Roll call please.
Mr. Calero?
Yes.
Mr. Polakowski?
Yes.
Mrs. Rhodes?
Yes.
Mr. Beistel?
Yes.
Mr. Benz?
Yes, motion passes five zero with four absent.
It's probably an announcement since it's financial.
I don't know, you want to toss that now since it's more financial and fall under?
I would like to do that.
Okay.
We currently have us a depository, PNC Bank. We had made changes last year, maybe not last year, but probably beginning of this year, to move some of our finances out of Scottsdale Bank and Trust and put them in another fund that would net us a lot more interest. In the course of that discussion, we had talked about moving our business accounts. PNC is our depository, moving our depository to Scottsdale Bank and Trust to replace the funds that we had taken out of the Scottsdale Bank and Trust, um, for many, many years has been a partner with us in many activities, in providing us funding through the ITC, and as I said for years, um, in making our deposits with them. They had provided us with a more than fair interest rate. It's only been in the last few years that the interest rates have gone down so low that they've not been able to, um, give us the rate that we could have gotten elsewhere. So we made that change over, but we had discussed with them, I believe it was in December or January, about changing over to them as our new depository, and I would like to do that. I would like to make the recommendation that we, that we do that, make a motion to change it over. That made all our business accounts and, um, and we are depository for any of our funding that we received.
Were anything changed since they're selling out?
Shouldn't change. In fact, um, I said their changeover isn't until November. When I talked to Don, that's what he told me, um, and there shouldn't be any changes at all. In fact, he indicated that there might possibly, because they're a larger organization, obviously, than Scottsdale Bank and Trust, they might be thinking that they might be able to offer us that Scottsdale Bank and Trust couldn't offer us before. There might be, there might be maybe higher interest rate. I mean, he didn't, he didn't want to be specific, but he said there might be things they could offer that he, as a smaller bank, was not able to do. Again, I just look at it from the standpoint that, uh, our funds have to be deposited somewhere. PNC is, again, no complaints about them, but they're not a local bank, and even though Scottsdale Bank and Trust won't be a local bank, Don Kiefer will still be serving on their board of directors. And it's not like the bank is being switched over and everybody's moving out, so.
Is there a second to the motion?
I'll second.
Do you have a date in mind, Mr. Calero?
Yes, um, again, because it's something that we, obviously it's going to take some work here. Our office is here, because we have to change payroll and everything over. Um, I was looking at a November the first date. That would be before the other bank actually came in, but I could then inform Scottsdale Bank and Trust that we're going to do that effective November. That we'll make the changeover begin and have it effective by November the first.
Is that okay with you, Mr. Beistel? November first deadline, is that okay with you?
Yeah.
So a motion by Mr. Calero, second by Mr. Beistel, any other questions? Citizens comments? Roll call please.
Mr. Polakowski?
Yes.
Mrs. Rhodes?
Yes.
Mr. Beistel?
Yes.
Mr. Calero? Mr. Benz?
Yes, motion passes five zero with four absent. Uh, for the sake of time, since this isn't our normal voting meeting, I'm assuming that none of the reports... Yeah? Well, I knew you guys voted, but I didn't talk about that.
Our meeting is next week.
Okay. And, yeah, we're prepared, so we'll then skip down to the superintendent's report then.
Yeah, obviously we're gearing up for the new school year. Kindergarten orientation is next, group teachers will be back on the 24th, and students will be back on the 30th. Mr. Mash and I had the privilege of traveling to Philadelphia in July to attend the National Association of Elementary and Secondary School Principals Conference, where Southmoreland Middle School was recognized for the second time as a national breakthrough school. I did attend a meeting of the CWC TC Professional Advisory Council this month. Mr. Heichu and a group of administrators met together. We developed and revised the gifting, a gifted screening ma- let me spit that out again. A gifted screening matrix for Southmoreland, uh, conducted interviews for several positions. We had a virtual meeting with Dr. Conway, who's the executive director of Westmoreland Intermediate Unit, and officials of other districts in the county, and we learned that the Crossroads, um, School for Alternative Education for Disruptive Youth will not open in the fall. So we had to scramble a little bit because we had several students who were placed at Crossroads, and we needed to find other placements for them. Subsequently, about a week and a half ago, we learned that the, uh, Westmoreland Intermediate Unit, ICE, which is intensive therapeutic emotional support, uh, program, will not open either. They shared a building with Crossroads and shared some staff with Crossroads, and the enrollment was such that, um, it was cost prohibitive, prohibitive, uh, to run either of those programs with the enrollments that they had, so they're both, um, no longer operational. I attached some information to your agenda, dealing with the combustible gas report from the landfill, information about an activity that some of our students participated in with Lake Erie College of Osteopathic Medicine, and a thank you letter from the Borough of Scottdale regarding the Olympics in the Park program that our fifth grade has participated in. Uh, Mr. Calero, Mr. Mash and I spent a good bit of time together planning the new administrative configuration at SES. Similarly, quite a number of us, including administrators and secretaries, spent a good deal of time learning new responsibilities as we divided work dealing with federal programs, PIMS homeless students, home schooled students, cyber and charter students, CSIU foster students, and a host of other, um, responsibilities. And this is obviously due to the fact that we downsized our administrative department by an administrative secretary and a principal. We met with quite a few parents and students throughout the summer, just planning for the upcoming year. Johnson Controls has finished their work. Uh, we had the opportunity to, um, take a tour with them. Looked over the boiler and the chillers and the lighting and so on and so forth. And I would like to arrange a tour for your, for you folks as well. And I thought maybe we could meet at six o'clock prior to either the September planning or September voting meeting, if that's amenable to everybody. Okay, uh, you want to do it before the planning meeting? Okay, so, I'm going to plan, and I'll, I'll send out a reminder, but we will meet, uh, we'll start at the high school and work our way this direction. And finally, and some of you are aware of, uh, some of this, and some of you may not be aware of a lot of it, but approximately three o'clock on Tuesday morning, August 8th, a semi truck used our primary center driveway as a turnaround spot. Unfortunately, the height of the rig was, was higher than the height of the main power line that supplies the building with electricity and telephone service. So wires were pulled away from the building and two poles were broken. Um, one of the poles had a transformer, and when that transformer hit the ground, it broke open. Now, inside that transformer, because it's an older transformer, uh, there's a mineral oil substance that helps to conduct the electricity, and some of that material leaked from the damaged transformer. So, uh, following established safety procedures, the mineral oil was analyzed, uh, and, uh, First Energy took care of that analysis, but it was found that there was a small concentration of polychlor- and polychlorinated biphenols or PCBs, uh, in, in that oil, and that's obviously a regulated substance. Um, so First Energy, Verizon, the Department of Environmental Protection responded very promptly. First Energy got a hazmat team in here, and as part of that accident, cleaned up all the affected soil and all the asphalt's being removed, uh, taken off-site, uh, and being replaced to avoid any exposure to anyone entering the school grounds. So, a- as we speak, um, it's expected that all work will be completed in time for orientation and the opening of school to start as scheduled. And if you, uh, look at your electric agenda, you click on where it says drive, download, and that'll download a little file for you, and you can click on that, and you can see some pictures, both of the damaged poles, um, and the cleanup operation that's going on. Quite pleased with the, um, the efficiency that these, these folks all responded, and, uh, they were quite interested in ensuring that we had a safe environment for our kids. We do appreciate that. And that concludes my report, sir.
Thank you. Um, selectors report?
Attached to your agenda under the motions for CAMCO and by your pediatrics are my recommendations for some additional language, uh, to be added to those contracts, and probably in the future to, um, any other independent contractors who are offering employment to an applicant who would be in direct contact with children of the school district. And, um, this is to be very clear with them, so that they understand that they have obligations beyond just merely getting, um, a Act 151 child abuse clearance and the criminal record check clearance. There's actually a requirement to get a, a statement from the employee of, um, all the places that the employee has worked, and then to, uh, check on those to make sure that there were no, um, problems, uh, which would have resulted in discipline or discharge. So because of the way, uh, these two contracts in particular were worded, it caused me concern, um, that they were on their face, uh, not necessarily complying. And so this will, uh, you know, make it obvious to them that they need to take these additional steps. So that language is attached, um, to those, uh, two resolutions, uh, under the title of memo, and the additional language is here, which substantially follows the statute. The other thing is that, um, I have been working, um, and will have some additional work to do with, uh, Mrs. Tarrson, as your right to know it, officer. And this is because, um, Simon Campbell, uh, has filed with, uh, Southmoreland, a right to know request dated, uh, July 22, 2017, which was received by email on July 24th, and it contained 16 separate requests for documents and information. Uh, these apparently were sent to about 594 school entities, uh, in the state, which would be the school districts and IUs and, um, VOTECs, et cetera. They relate to an email sent by PSBA on July 17th to agency employees, uh, officials and solicitors. Uh, the PSBA announcement described a lawsuit filed by PSBA in Cumberland County Court against Simon Campbell and Councilanians for Union Reform, allegedly claiming tortuous interference with contractual relations and abusive process. I say allegedly because I do not have a copy of the lawsuit, and Southmoreland School District is actually not a named party to the lawsuit. It also refers to, um, a right to know request of May 7th by Simon Campbell, which sought information from, um, school entities. Southmoreland, uh, previously did make a response to that voluminous request. Allegedly, PSBA is claiming that Mr. Campbell's abusing the right to know laws and means interference with the contractual relationship between PSBA and its members. And, um, I will need to obtain some additional information, uh, from, um, board and, um, officers in order to, um, advise Mrs. Tarrson about answering that, which is due, um, before the end of the month. So that concludes my report. Um, I would like to have an executive session because that does involve litigation.
Thank you. Uh, new business St. Vincent's Prevention Project?
Every year, I'll say, St. Vincent's asked us for a contribution of $1,020. We're recommending that the board approve, uh, that yearly contribution of $1,020 again, and that helps to offset the services that they provide here, um, with, um, crisis intervention, drug and alcohol prevention, bullying awareness.
Need a motion, please? Motion by Mr. Calero, second.
Second.
Second by Mr. Beistel, questions? Roll call please.
Mrs. Rhodes?
Yes.
Mr. Beistel?
Yes.
Mr. Calero?
Yes.
Mr. Polakowski?
Yes.
Mr. Benz?
Yes, motion passes five zero with four absent. WIU Student Services?
It's recommended that the board approve the Student Services Interagency Governmental Agreement with Westmoreland Intermediate Unit commencing on July 1st, 2017, and ending on June 30th, 2018. Invoicing rates are reconciled to the actual cost generated by the service. This is just a continuation of, of the, uh, services that we receive from the IU annually.
Need a motion, please?
So be it.
Motion by Mrs. Rhodes, second.
Second.
Second by Mr. Calero, questions? Roll call please.
Mr. Beistel?
Yes.
Mr. Calero?
Yes.
Mr. Polakowski?
Yes.
Mrs. Rhodes?
Yes.
Mr. Benz?
Yes, motion passes five to zero with four absent. CAMCO?
It is recommended that the board approve an agreement with CAMCO to provide physical and occupational therapy for the 2017-2018 school year, subject to the solicitor's recommendations.
Need a motion, please? Motion by Mr. Calero, second. Second by Mrs. Rhodes, questions? Roll call please.
Mr. Calero?
Yes.
Mr. Polakowski?
Yes.
Mrs. Rhodes?
Yes.
Mr. Beistel?
Yes.
Mr. Benz?
Yes, motion passes five to zero with four absent. WCSI?
It's recommended that the board approve a letter of agreement with Westmoreland Case Management and Supports Incorporated to work collaboratively in the interest of shared clientele for a two-year period, effective July 15, 2017, to July 15, 2019. It's just an understanding of how we do business together. There are no costs associated with this motion.
Need a motion, please? Motion by Mrs. Rhodes, second. Second by Mr. Calero, questions? Since there are no costs, we should take a roll call. I mean, on the voice clip?
No, it's a roll call, sir. It's an agreement.
Uh, roll call please.
Mr. Polakowski?
Yes.
Mrs. Rhodes?
Yes.
Mr. Beistel?
Yes.
Mr. Calero?
Yes.
Mr. Benz?
Yes, motion passes five to zero with four absent. Wellness Policy?
It's recommended that the board post revisions to Policy 246, School Wellness, to reflect the most recent changes in the law. And I have to apologize because it appears that we forgot to attach that policy. Lynn, can you off the top of your head just talk a little about what those changes are?
Yeah, I have a list.
Sorry to put you on the spot there.
Well, there's a bunch more requirements that came out of the past year with the rest of it. I can include this, um, with some information to the board with the policy. I don't know if you want me to read all these, but basically, um, just quick, some, some quick things. We now must, uh, we're required to designate one or more officials to ensure that we comply with the wellness policy. We're required to identify that person's position. We must permit certain groups to permit, participate in the development, implementation, review, and update of the policy. We are going to be renaming a new committee in the coming month or so. That committee must evaluate the policy every three years. The wellness policy must now include specific goals for nutrition education, nutrition promotion, which is a new aspect, physical activities and other school-based activities. And they must permit the marketing of only foods and beverages that are consistent with smart snacks regulations, which we follow in the, um, items that we sell a la carte in the cafeteria. Uh, we must conduct, as I mentioned, the assessment every three years. Must be, that assessment must be made available to the public. So there's a few more things here, but basically, this is all included in the new template that we use that came from PSBA. We pretty much use that, and then, uh, there were certain sections of that you could modify to fit your district, and, um, a few of the administrators went through and did that. But, uh, we just posted this last year after our review, and they requested some changes, and then from, uh, that point, new guidance was, um, placed, and they want us to update it again.
So what we will do is we will upload the actual revised policy to your board docs tomorrow, and then you can go back into the agenda and check it out, as can the general public. But we would request permission to post this, uh, for up to a thirty, or for at least a 30-day period. And then, uh, we can vote, uh, to either revise or, or adopt at, at one of the, uh, meetings after the 30-day period has gone.
Need a motion, please?
So be it.
Motion by Mr. Beistel, second.
Second.
Second by Mr. Polakowski, questions?
I have a question. I'm going to leave here. You said that previously there were, there was a committee, there was always a committee that did this?
There was a school health council that we had that, um, disbanded, oh my, four or five years ago. But now what they're requiring is that you actually have a committee, that there are no requirements for the number of times you meet per year, but there are requirements for evaluating the policy and making sure that, um, the district is following the policy.
How would we, I mean, how would we go about, we didn't have one, how would we go about? Would that committee be made up of administrators, school officials?
It's...
Parents?
Parents, students, um, teachers, board members, administrators, and, um, the general public.
Do you plan on advertising for individuals that want to serve on that committee? Or are we just going to appoint, or are we going to, how are we, I mean, again, I'm not, I know you have a big... Did you have any thoughts on that at all?
Um, we haven't gotten that far. We, we've been talking about, um, some people, and, uh, we have a few people in mind, but we can put that out there certainly.
Yeah, we can put an announcement on the website.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Roll call please.
Mrs. Rhodes?
Yes.
Mr. Beistel?
Yes.
Mr. Calero?
Yes.
Mr. Polakowski?
Yes.
Mr. Benz?
Yes, motion passes five zero with four absent. The Hughes Center?
It's recommended that the board approve a contract, uh, for educational services with the Hughes Center. It's a residential treatment facility for the 2017-18 school year.
Need a motion, please?
So be it.
Motion by Mr. Beistel, second.
Second.
Second by Mr. Polakowski, questions? Mr. Calero?
Yeah, I understand these are requirements imposed by the federal government, state, whatever, but, um, this is residential, so this is, this is a situation where a child would be placed in a residential facility, and because we are the home district, we're required to provide them with, um, their education. Am I, I mean, is that generally what we're saying here?
That's exactly right, yes.
Okay, so my question is, if that child were not in a residential facility, let's say that child were to stay home, and they could not be placed in the school environment, the options would be for homeschooling, um, computer-based school?
Homeschooling, cyber schooling, um, we could provide education in the home through our district. Um, those would be the options, or, or placement in, in one of our local, uh, therapeutic schools, Northwest Human Services, so on and so forth.
So, but, and I guess the bottom line is, though, that we're bound by the fact that when the parent determines they need residential care, that locks us in. We're not...
Actually, this was a medical decision, but yes. Yeah, anytime a child goes to a residential treatment facility, that, that's a medical, um, placement.
Any other questions? Roll call please.
Mr. Beistel?
Yes.
Mr. Calero?
Yes.
Mr. Polakowski?
Yes.
Mrs. Rhodes?
Yes.
Mr. Benz?
Yes, motion passes five to zero with four absent. Bay Ida, uh, Pediatrics?
It's recommended that the board enter into an agreement with Bay Ida Pediatrics for the provision of one-to-one nursing service for an eligible student at the contracted rate of $45 an hour.
Need a motion, please?
This is subject to the memo also?
Yeah, this would be subject to the terms of Mr. Potonics' memo, absolutely. Thank you, David.
Motion by Mr. Calero, second.
Second.
Second by Mr. Polakowski, questions? Roll call please.
Mr. Calero?
Yes.
Mr. Polakowski?
Yes.
Mrs. Rhodes?
Yes.
Mr. Beistel?
Yes.
Mr. Benz?
Yes, motion passes five to zero with four absent. Approval of outside legal counsel?
Yes, when, uh, Mr. Potonics, um, was reappointed as solicitor, um, I was directed to, uh, come back to you for approval with, um, firms who, who might be, uh, used for outside counsel for, um, specialized kinds of services. And we're recommending that those firms, uh, it's recommended that the board approve the following terms to be used as outside counsel on an as-needed basis. It would be Andrews &amp; Price, Peacock, Keller &amp; Ecker, Quattrini-Rafferty, Campbell Durant, Beatty, Palumbo &amp; Miller, Myelo Brongo &amp; Myelo, Clifford Pastell, Ginsmore &amp; Scholl, and the Beard Legal Group. The board author, also authorizes the superintendent to engage the services of another firm not on this list in the event none of the firms on the list is able to address an issue that is of particular urgency. So that would mean if something comes up between board meetings and there's no time to, to call a meeting, I would be authorized to, to get someone who would be capable of handling a situation.
Need a motion, please? Motion by Mr. Calero, second.
Second.
Second by Mr. Polakowski, questions? Roll call please.
Mr. Polakowski?
Yes.
Mrs. Rhodes?
Yes.
Mr. Beistel?
Yes.
Mr. Calero?
Yes.
Mr. Benz?
Yes, motion passes five to zero with four absent. WIU Lease for Ruffsdale Elementary?
It's recommended that the board renew the lease with Westmoreland Intermediate Unit for certain spaces at Ruffsdale Elementary School for a one-year period at the 2016-17 rate, which is $15,298.18 a year.
Need a motion, please? Motion by Mrs. Rhodes, second.
Second.
Second by Mr. Polakowski, questions?
Jack, do you know how much space we actually rented them for this 15,000? And yet, I mean, again, if you don't know, that's fine, but I just wondered if we had an idea how much space we were actually renting them for that meeting?
Yes, I do, and I upload, I, why can I not see the attachment? There, there is a, according to here, there's an attachment to this item. Why am I not seeing it on my, uh, thing? I do not know.
You're not seeing it on our...
Oh, no. Yeah. Well, there you have it. I want to say it's about six rooms offhand. I honestly, I uploaded it, I promise you I did, and it disappeared. Five to six rooms.
Pretty good rate?
Not bad.
No, I mean, they're getting a pretty good rate.
That's what I said, not bad, yeah.
They're getting a pretty good rate.
It's a little less than half the building, is what it amounts to, and then Westmoreland Human, Westmoreland Community Action rates the other half of the building, so the total rent is about 30,000 a year.
Is, do we, do we negotiate this with them, or is it just simply we, every year we just kind of renew it at the same rate?
Well, it was a three-year lease, and there was an increase every year. And there's a clause in there that says, you know, that it would automatically renew to 2016-17 rate. And since we're having discussions about whether or not we're going to continue to own that building, I thought it would be the simplest thing, just to keep it at the current rate until we know what's going on there.
Like I said, I'm going through some personal knowledge I have about other space that I know that's rented for educational purposes. It's a lot more, it's more foot than we're charging, yeah.
Right.
Okay.
Another question?
Another question is, is this going to hinder us eliminating this out of our system? Selling the elementary school?
No, I don't think so.
Okay.
And that's why we're only doing it for one year, start with.
Because you know, I'd like to see this thing get moved on faster.
Yeah, I need to get with the supervisors and the planning authorities so that we can figure out how we can subdivide it, still keep the part of the property that you want to keep, and deal with the water and sewage taps, especially the sewage. So that's kind of where we are with that right now.
But it is moving quite along, right? I mean, it's not still made.
It's moving at a snail's pace, but it's moving, yeah.
Any other questions? Roll call, please.
Mrs. Rhodes?
Yes.
Mr. Beistall?
Yes.
Mr. Calero?
Yes.
Mr. Polakowski?
Yes.
Mr. Benz?
Yes, motion passes five to zero with four absent. Need a motion to recess to executive session for personnel-
And litigation.
And litigation.
Yes.
So moved.
Motion by Mrs. Rhodes, second.
Second.
Second by Mr. Beistall. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes five to zero with four absent. Second by Mr. Polakowski.
At least of others.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes five to zero with four absent. Tenure granted?
It's recommended that the board approve tenure for the following teachers that have completed three years of satisfactory service with the Southmoreland School District. Abby Cesario, elementary teacher at Southmoreland Elementary School, and John Saunders, English teacher at the high school.
Need a motion, please?
I'll make that mention.
Motion by Mr. Polakowski, second.
Second.
Second by Mr. Beistall, questions? Roll call, please.
Mr. Beistall?
Yes.
Mr. Calero?
Yes.
Mr. Polakowski?
Yes.
Mrs. Rhodes?
Yes.
Mr. Benz?
Yes, motion passes five to zero with four absent. Resignation of Assistant Girls Basketball Coach?
It's recommended that the board accept the resignation of Emily Morrison as Assistant Girls Basketball Coach and authorize administration to post and advertise the position. Ms. Morrison would like to continue on as a volunteer, so we would ask that you approve that as well.
Need a motion, please?
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Calero, second.
Second.
Second by Mr. Beistall, questions? Roll call, please.
Mr. Calero?
Yes.
Mr. Polakowski?
Yes.
Mrs. Rhodes?
Yes.
Mr. Beistall?
Yes.
Mr. Benz?
Yes, motion passes five to zero with four absent. Employment of Assistant High School Girls Basketball Coach?
It's recommended that the board employ Amber Sernudo as the Assistant High School Girls Basketball Coach at the contracted supplemental salary of $3,976.
Need a motion, please?
So be it.
Motion by Mr. Beistall, second.
Second.
Second by Mr. Polakowski, roll call, please.
Mr. Polakowski?
Yes.
Mrs. Rhodes?
Yes.
Mr. Beistall?
Yes.
Mr. Calero?
Yes.
Mr. Benz?
Yes, motion passes five to zero with four absent. Resignation of Assistant High School Principal?
It's recommended that the board accept with regrets the resignation of Dr. Tanya Saintamont as the high school assistant principal. Unauthorized administration to post and advertise the position.
Need a motion, please?
So be it.
Motion by Mr. Beistall, second.
I don't think we should second it. We should just let that go, and Mrs. State, but I'll second it.
He already beat you since you started talking. Motion by Mr. Beistall, second by Mr. Polakowski.
Yes.
Roll call, please.
Mrs. Rhodes?
I have a question before we-
I'm sorry.
And how long would Dr. Saintamont be staying on?
I believe that we have the ability to hold her for up to 60 days.
So the plan would be wait till we probably-
The plan would be to hang on to her either for 60 days or until a suitable replacement is found.
Okay.
I haven't, I haven't shared that with Dr. Perino yet, so I'm not sure how happy he'll be about that, but it is what it is.
Roll call, please.
Mrs. Rhodes?
Yes.
Mr. Beistall?
Yes.
Mr. Calero?
Yes.
Mr. Polakowski?
Yes.
Mr. Benz?
Yes, motion passes five to zero with four absent. Retirement of Building Secretary?
It is recommended that the board accept with regrets the retirement of Charlene Pritz, Building Secretary at Southmoreland Elementary, effective August 29th, 2017. Charlene, I believe, has been with us since 1980. She's had a long career here and has served the district well, so we certainly wish her the best in this new chapter of her life.
Need a motion, please?
So moved.
Motion by Mrs. Rhodes, second.
Second.
Second by Mr. Calero, roll call, please.
Mr. Beistall?
Yes.
Mr. Calero?
Yes.
Mr. Polakowski?
Yes.
Mrs. Rhodes?
Yes.
Mr. Benz?
Yes, motion passes five to zero with four absent. Employment of Building Secretary?
It's recommended that the board employ Amy Yezek of Mount Pleasant, PA as a Building Secretary to be assigned to Southmoreland Elementary School at a salary of $29,015.52, which is 75% of the base salary of $38,687.36.
Need a motion, please?
So be it.
Motion by Mr. Beistall, second.
Second.
Second by Mrs. Rhodes, roll call, please.
Mr. Calero?
Yes.
Mr. Polakowski?
Yes.
Mrs. Rhodes?
Yes.
Mr. Beistall?
Yes.
Mr. Benz?
Yes, motion passes five to zero with four absent. Employment of Part-Time Developmental Reading Teacher?
It is recommended that the board hire Jessica Niescheff of North Huntingdon, Pennsylvania, as the Part-Time Developmental Reading Teacher for the middle school at a salary of 2,000, excuse me, $22,504.
Need a motion, please?
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Calero, second.
Second.
Second by Mr. Polakowski, roll call, please.
Mr. Polakowski?
Yes.
Mrs. Rhodes?
Yes.
Mr. Beistall?
Yes.
Mr. Calero?
Yes.
Mr. Benz?
Yes, motion passes five to zero with four absent. Resignation of Paraprofessional?
It's recommended that the board accept with regrets the resignation of Cindy Porbaugh as middle school personal care assistant, effective immediately.
Need a motion, please?
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Calero, second.
Second.
Second by Mrs. Rhodes, roll call, please.
Mrs. Rhodes?
Yes.
Mr. Beistall?
Yes.
Mr. Calero?
Yes.
Mr. Polakowski?
Yes.
Mrs. Mr. Benz?
Yes, motion passes five to zero with four absent. Employment of Paraprofessional?
It is recommended that the board employ Judith Hagerman of Scottdale, Pennsylvania, as a paraprofessional at an annual salary of $15,564.74.
Need a motion, please?
So be it.
Motion by Mr. Beistall, second.
Second.
Second by Mr. Calero, roll call, please.
Mr. Beistall?
Yes.
Mr. Calero?
Yes.
Mr. Polakowski?
Yes.
Mrs. Rhodes?
Yes.
Mr. Benz?
Yes, motion passes five to zero with four absent. FMLA for SMS teacher?
It's recommended that the board approve an FMLA for Jennifer Taraski, middle school teacher, from approximately August 30, 2017, through November 17, 2017, with no break in service. Jennifer will utilize 41 days of accumulated sick leave from approximately August 30 through October 26th.
Need a motion, please?
I'll make that mention.
Next by Mr. Polakowski, second.
Second.
Second by Mr. Beistall, roll call, please.
Mr. Calero?
Yes.
Mr. Polakowski?
Yes.
Mrs. Rhodes?
Yes.
Mr. Beistall?
Yes.
Mr. Benz?
Yes, motion passes five to zero with four absent. FMLA, high school teacher?
It's recommended that the board approve an FMLA for Jenna Hickson for approximately a six-week period, starting on or about September 16th, 2017, and intermittent FMLA thereafter for up to the remainder of the 12-week FMLA leave.
Need a motion, please?
So moved.
Motion by Mrs. Rhodes, second.
Second.
Second by Mr. Beistall, roll call, please.
Mr. Polakowski?
Yes.
Mrs. Rhodes?
Yes.
Mr. Beistall?
Yes.
Mr. Calero?
Yes.
Mr. Benz?
Yes, motion passes five to zero with four absent. Band Volunteer?
It's recommended that the board approve Ben Wilcox as a volunteer for the marching band for the 2017-18 school year.
Need a motion, please?
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Calero, second.
Second.
Second by Mr. Polakowski, roll call, please.
Mrs. Rhodes?
Yes.
Mr. Beistall?
Yes.
Mr. Calero?
Yes.
Mr. Polakowski?
Yes.
Mr. Benz?
Yes, motion passes five to zero with four absent. Class Play Sponsor?
It's recommended that the board approve Michelle Zamperini and Jamie Gore as class play sponsors for the 2017-18 school year at a supplemental salary of $1,290 each.
Need a motion, please?
So moved.
Motion by Mrs. Rhodes, second.
Second.
Second by Mr. Polakowski, roll call, please.
Mr. Beistall?
Yes.
Mr. Calero?
Yes.
Mr. Polakowski?
Yes.
Mrs. Rhodes?
Yes.
Mr. Benz?
Yes, motion passes five to zero with four absent. Day-to-day substitute additions?
It's recommended that the board approve Patricia Pagelak of Ruffstale, PA as a secretary and cafeteria substitute.
Need a motion, please?
So be it.
Motion by Mr. Beistall, second.
Second.
Second by Mr. Calero, roll call, please.
Mr. Calero?
Yes.
Mr. Polakowski?
Yes.